Este es el 5 de febrero. Y vamos a llamar la orden, vamos a pasar orden. Vamos a pasar lista. Solamente quiero recordar a las personas que están en interpretación en España, las tenemos disponibles para ustedes. Háganles saber a la actuaria municipal. Y vamos a empezar con la oración invocación.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members, all those here in the chamber with us and beyond in our virtual community this evening, will you pray with me? Gracious loving God, spirit of life, spirit of love and compassion. By whatever name we call the holy, we are grateful to be together here in our beloved community of Santa Paula. We are grateful for our very lives even as we know that many struggle here in our beloved community and beyond and across our nation right now. I'd like to add a special prayer this evening for our young people from the Santa Paula Police Explorers who are here with us being recognized this evening. May we be reminded once again that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, our cousin, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least among us. Tonight, we pray for our mayor, for our city officials, and in particular for our assembled council. We pray for the agenda set before them. May this work this evening benefit the people and the future of this community in the weeks and months and this new year going forward. And finally, we pray for those affected by the recent fires and storms being experienced in our country even as we are very grateful for the rain. May all beings be safe, may all beings be at peace. May it be so. Amen.
Tenemos al gerente municipal. Vamos a el juramento de la altad. Yo juro la altada a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y la república por la que se representa. Una nación bajo Dios invisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Muchas gracias.
Council member Crossway. Present. Council member Cornejo. Vice Mayor Juárez. Mayor Chávez. And we have council member Ornelas absent tonight.
All right, this next portion of our agendas for public comment. Just wanted to verify if we have Sarah Álvarez here to make a public comment. No, okay. Is there another public comment? Thank you, vice mayor. We have Richard Abbott. Sir, can you come to the podium and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Some of you might remember me from before. I've been here three times. I'm the anti rodent glue trap guy. And I was here pleading my case that the glue trap in Santa Paula banned. Many of you probably remember that. It fell on deaf ears, nothing happened. But my wife picked up this article here in the Ventura County Star. It was by hints from Heloise. She's a fan. Anyway, I'm going to read this to you because it's some information I didn't realize, I didn't know, and it's rather interesting. I'll just read it. It's a short article, so I'll be done here in a minute. Dear Heloise, I read with interest the letter from Paula D. about sticky glue traps. Did you know that because glue traps are so inhumane, many American stores like Target, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, Rite Aid, and others don't sell them? Well, I didn't know that, but I do now. England, Iceland, Ireland, and New Zealand have banned glue traps also. In addition, legislation has been introduced in Congress to ban glue traps nationwide. That I didn't know, but apparently that's the case. I found this online. While animals are stuck on glue boards, they cry out loudly in pain and have been known to bite through their limbs, attempting to free themselves. Units found and rescued these animals don't survive because of the injuries and effects of the glue. Now, sticky glue traps are not humane. They're only a cheap convenience for people who don't or can't bother with preventing mice and other critters into their home. There are plethora of other options to keep out mice, believe me. I've dealt with this problem. And then she says, I regularly spray pepper and oil around my house and car and have two snap traps in my basement. Haven't been bothered with mice since. Well, I've trapped thirty-six of them in my house after I plugged them all the holes with. I used a. Cloth and whatnot, and it seems to work. And I've never trapped them with a. Have a heart trap and I've never had any problems. So I don't need, we don't need glue traps. Now, when I read this to my wife, read it back, she read it, and I read it back to her, she said, well, if that's the case with inherent cruelty, why do we still have, why have we not banned these traps before? Why does the state still allow this? Ohio banned them, West Hollywood banned them, and obviously countries and major retail outlets have banned them. My answer was, I don't know, sweetheart, but I'll ask them. And that's why I'm here tonight. I don't expect an answer from you because it's a rather involved subject, and I don't want to take up any more time, of your time. But our next meeting is the nineteenth of February, I believe, and I'll be back February the nineteenth and see if you can come up with any ideas of why we have not banned the rodent glue trap in the city of Santa Paula. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Appreciate you coming and sharing your community concern. We have no other public comments at the moment. We are going to move on to presentations, item six A. Santa Paula Police Department Explorers Recognition. If I can ask the chief Aguilar to please come to the podium. And the team, the leadership team you have assembled to commanders. And please share with us what took place recently.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council, our city staff, and all those in the viewing audience. I'm very happy and proud to be here tonight in front of you to recognize these amazing young men and women who are here. And I'm here supported by my executive team, Commander Starnes and Commander Madison as we do this. These explorers from the Santa Paula Police Department have been committed and dedicated to learning, performing, or preparing for future careers and becoming disciplined in life skills training. Over the past year, you know, as you know, they have trained for this national tactical competition that is held in Chandler, Arizona. I applaud them for their efforts. As you know, I was up here a couple of years ago when they attended their first Chandler competition and they came away with a third place award. Well, I'm so proud and happy tonight to tell you, and as you have seen in our press release, that they have come back with some more bling. They've come back with a third place award and also a first place award in Incident Command System Critical Incident Exercise. The third place award was for a obstacle course with the dummy drag, climbing over fences, block walls, and that was for the female category. So one of our female explorers amongst the team accomplished that great feat. I had the opportunity to spend my time there with them again at this competition and following with our fabulous explorer advisors, watching them participate in these scenarios which are graded very highly by police officers from Arizona. And just watching how they act, how they conducted themselves professionally, and after these events, they were debriefed on by these peace officers about their decisions and why they made them in these critical incidents. And the critical thinking that these explorers replied with was inspiring to me. And it wasn't just they stood there without an answer. They all had answers and contributed why they did what they did to either save a life, intercept a situation from going bad, or just getting through an incident successfully and explaining their actions. That to me is the epitome of our explorer program. We strive to give them opportunities, not just here to learn life skills, but to become part of the community and public safety. We have had several explorers here who have become city employees, whether it be police cadets, community service officers, which we have right now, and also police officers. Very, very proud of all of this group, and I know my command staff is too, and I know you'll acknowledge them shortly, the explorers. But I want to really say that this is not possible without the direction of our explorer advisors who are here tonight. Senior Officer Ivette Solis, Community Service Officer Juan Navarete, Police Cadet Sandra López, and our volunteer advisor Juan Olmos, who is a retired peace officer. This group has prepared this team to do amazing things, and I'm so proud to acknowledge them tonight. And most of all, I would like to thank the council for your support and the parents of these phenomenal young men and women who have allowed them to come and dedicate time to volunteer hours in the community, supporting great events, but also dedicating time to learning life skills to pursue public safety careers potentially in law enforcement. So my thanks to all of them for making us shine. They shined a bright star in the community of Santa Paula by their accomplishments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. We're going to present some certificates of recognition to the explorers, the recruits that also attended, and to their advisors. Someone asked vice mayor to join me to do a presentation of these certificates. Get this certificate, please. And then to the advisors, we have. Tenemos a Cadete López. Juan Olmos. And Detective Solis. This is always a fun part for me. It's what we call recruits, right? It's what we call recruits. For those who are first timers. For those who are first timers. Try to learn, and so we want to. It's the primera vez que están tratando de aprender. Para el vice alcalde que va a presentar. Kevin Abarete. Para Kevin Abarete.
Congratulations. Explorer recruit Paulina Guerrero.
Para Paulina Guerrero.
And explorer recruit Kaylee Albores.
Para Kaylee Albores. And then I'm actually going to pass this to. And then I'm actually going to pass this to. Senior Explorer Javier. Javier. Because I see a lot of ribbons on your chest there. Ve muchos moños en tu pecho. Hollywood Division. This is a full circle moment. I'd like to pass this on to you. I'd like to pass this on to you. As a senior leader that provides those certificates to your explorer crew. Para que tú entregues estos certificados a tu tropa.
Explorer Natalie Sanchez, she's not present.
Natalie Sanchez, que no está presente.
Explorer Jonathan Rivera. Jonathan Rivera.
Explorer Anthony Robledo.
Explorer Anthony Robledo.
Explorer Don Reyes, who is not present.
Explorer Don Reyes, que no está presente.
Explorer Francisco Ramos.
Explorer Francisco Ramos.
Explorer Rafael Hernandez.
Explorer Rafael Hernandez.
Explorer Kaden Hayes, who is not present. And Explorer Angel Casaneda.
And would you like to say anything?
I just want to say that I'm really proud of my team. We for sure worked really hard to get there and to get our award. So I'm really proud of my team.
We're actually going to ask everybody to please come to the podium and our council members, please join us at the podium. Not the podium, but in front of the logo there. They're at the top of the logotipo. And those officers that are present in the room or in the hallway. Are present, they're standing outside, in the pasillo, if they're outside, por favor, vengan.
If everyone would go to their sides to squeeze in, we have all these officers. We won't see if you need to go back behind anyone. Thank you. There, am I going to see you? Up, maybe these guys again, just a little bit more. There we go. Okay. Just don't want to miss anyone here. Great job.
Absolutely, vice mayor.
Well, first of all, again, before they leave, because we're going to lose the whole room right now when you all walk out. But congratulations again to the explorer unit. These things, these skills and experiences you experience will follow you for the rest of your life. You'll never forget them. You know, these things don't come easy. I remember in two thousand and six, when Chief Gonzalez was here, we tried to start an explorer post, not successful. Wasn't until about after two thousand and eleven when, I'm sorry, not two thousand and eleven, two thousand, ninety, ninety-seven was the first time. And then in two thousand and six was when Chief Steve McKinnon had us start the explorer post. So it's been a long time coming, and you guys have progressed quite a bit, and we are so proud of you. Thank you.
Chief.
I want to keep the explorers here. Learn about the fire service a little bit. Before I get started, just want to give a special thanks to Governor Matty for the rain we're having. It's been a, it's been a very busy fire season. I can remember back in mid-June being up and down the state in Kern County fighting fires. Here we are in January and February, and we're just wrapping up. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council, staff, members of the public. We're going to do our fourth quarter incident analysis. And I'm sure at the end of this, you'll have plenty of questions regarding the mountain fire in Palisades. I'll do my best to answer those questions for you. So if you look at fourth quarter statistics, a little bit down in call volume for the year and for the quarter. Look at underneath the total calls per service, you'll see number of wildfires at zero and number of other fires at twenty. One thing about the Santa Paula area, we get most of our fires in the river bottom, and those don't qualify as a wildfire. So if you see that number zero, and I go, oh, that's great. It's actually, a lot of the fires we get in the river bottom can expand to one acre, five acre, depending on the wind volume we have. And that's why you see that number there. I look back the previous two years of the fourth quarter, and the numbers were very similar. Eighteen and nineteen fires in that fourth quarter. One of the reasons we account for this is the colder temperature, and a lot of our unhoused individuals will light fires to stay warm. Unfortunately, sometimes those get out of hand in the river bottoms. You can see on the far right there are a number of, are a percentage of calls. Predominantly, we run medical calls, but we also have a good variety of other incidents we run. And as I have shown numerous times, about the third year I've been with you guys, our call volume really stays almost the same. We have that quarter three of two thousand and twenty-three, we had an anomaly where, but we've stayed right around the same seven hundred range of call volumes per quarter. And that lets you, you kind of look at the different quarters. I don't really see anything remarkable. Usually, quarter three is our busiest quarter. It's kind of your later summer, going into fall time. Nothing that extraordinary about the statistics here. This has been the same number for the last three years that I've reported to you. You guys remain at five percent, very similar to Morpark, very similar population densities. And we'll get into response types in our medicals. So our number one call we run in the city is fall victims. And you can look down, one of them I know I've mentioned before in my presentations is overdoses and poisonings. I do watch that number carefully. I'll show you in the next slide. You'll see a slight drop. Interestingly enough, opiate overdoses countywide are down. In two thousand and twenty-three, we don't have the number for twenty-four yet. I attribute that to both it being in the media and the awareness of fentanyl poisoning as well as having Narcan out in the field really accessible. Some of the incidents we've had recently, we had the Harvard Fire in early November. That was a structured fire that was underneath a Ray's Foundation house. As we all know, the mountain fire, this is an interesting picture because look at the foliage in the bottom of the picture, how the wind is blowing to your right. And look at the, we call it a header, so the smoke header, how it's pointed towards the ocean or almost like a southwest direction. That is one of the main reasons that the city of Santa Paula, based on where the fire starts, has been relatively unaffected by some of those fires because of the direction of the wind. So if you put a start, and I'm sure you were very aware of the Hughes Fire in LA County, which was east of Piru. If that fire would have jumped the five freeway and started trucking behind Piru, Fillmore, that's where we would have been extremely nervous and worried. We did have resources, strike teams stationed in the Fillmore area, getting ready for that moment. But I thought I'd point out the wind direction. Anytime you see the header lane over in a certain direction, that is the direction the fire was traveling. Here's during the mountain fire, that is our top right, that is our air fleet. Those are two of our Firehawks. That is a Type One helicopter that carries a thousand gallons of water, plus or minus based on its fuel load. Those were the only type helicopters that could have flown in those winds. All the rest were grounded during the mountain fire and Palisades Fire. Fixed wings were grounded because it was unsafe and the drops would have been ineffective. But those Type One helicopters, which we call heavies, were the only ones able to fly. On the top left, you see peer support dogs. We have three with our agency. They come to fire stations, they come to FCC, which is our communications center for our dispatchers. They really are great with peer support, helping with critical instant stress debriefing. The bottom right is base camp for the mountain fire, and you can see that it looks like LA City Fire there first. Those are called strike teams. They're groups of five engines with the leaders. We ordered, the incident commander, who was a captain for us, ordered one hundred strike teams. So five hundred engines for the, probably within the initial thirty minutes of that fire. We just, we know what a wind-driven fire is going to do and how far it'll travel, and we're. Unfortunately, we've experienced the Thomas Fire, the Woolsey Fire, so when we have a wind-driven fire, we are prepared to think big. And that's why we asked for that many resources. Bottom left is base camp. You see the livestock at the fairgrounds there. I believe this was the night of the Christmas parade. We had a large fire in the back lot of, in between some homes. It was a mixture of Conex boxes. You can kind of see those up in the storage containers, top right. Vehicles, it was held to this area and did not damage any structures. A fairly large fire. And as I was talking about earlier, our, like, the statistics said we don't have wildland fires, but here is an example of the river bottom fires you regularly have in this area. Most of them are kept under an acre. I think this one got to two to three acres in size. One interesting thing, Chief Aguilar texted me a couple of weeks ago, and we had a, we had a response in the river bottom, and the crews could not find it. And so what we were able to do is we have a drone program. And we were able to fly a drone that has the ability to search out for thermal signatures. And he flew the area and was unable to find it, but it's kind of the technology and where we're going in the future. And we have these capabilities with our agency. Bottom left, if you want to, that's our hand crew. Those are probably the hardest workers on our agency. They cut hand line around fires up the side of South Mountain. That is what really gives us our containment lines around fire because we don't plumb what we call hose lines or wet line around all fires. Some of that inaccessible terrain, the hand crew will be getting up there. You'll see there's chainsaws on the ground. So they all cut a hand line, which is probably two to three feet wide of bare earth around the entire fire. And that's our hand crew. We have four twenty-person crews. You've seen this many times. I'll give you some updates on the construction there. Fire Station Twenty-Nine moving right along. You see some, it's kind of exciting, some of the walls are starting to go up. A lot of the plumbing and utilities are now in the ground. As soon as you see the walls going up, it's kind of an exciting thing. Our RAs are rescue ambulances. Here's the responses in the, in the county. You have a lot of responses. So RA twenty-six at Station Twenty-Six responds to all medical aides in the city. And it is a cooperation with, we have a public, I'm sorry, a private company called AMR, which also provides ambulance service. We will transport. Any, anytime AMR has a greater than ten-minute response time, we will take over the transport of, and we'll cancel the AMR resource. So there's no delay in transport for citizens. And this is a heat map of responses. So you'll see the transports were nine. That was nine times that you would have been having to wait greater than 10 minutes for an ambulance to get there. With our capabilities, with our RAs, it kind of supplements the system. It allows us to transport somebody. Or if we have multiple patients on scene of a traffic accident or an MCI, a mass casualty incident, we'll be able to transport there as well. It's kind of spread out where some of the transports were. Happy to answer any questions, and I have a feeling there's going to be a couple. Council members? Large fires in the state. Questions?
I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, regarding the overdoses, you said that the numbers have gone down and you mentioned either public information and/or Narcan use. Is this Narcan used by private individuals? Or when you, when you utilize Narcan, do you not count it as an overdose?
I am making an educated guess that Narcan availability is helping to reduce it because the public can also get it.
Right.
You can, you can, I think Coast is the name of the Ventura County website. And you can find where they offer Narcan. You can go pick up a, it's a kit for the home. Also, all first responders, including police officers, have it as well. And so I think it's a culmination of all the above.
Okay. But if fire personnel deploy Narcan, you count it as an overdose on it? Because it counteracts the effects of it? I would think you do.
So when we get a call type, it's based on the information received at dispatch. And not necessarily is an overdose just an opiate. So it could be accidental overdose on prescription meds. It could be alcohol, any type.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
I'll ask one question. I was trying to think how to word my question. So with there being more and more electric fuels, whether it's in vehicles or backups for solar, or do you all have technology to contain those kinds of fires or what happens?
Interesting or good timing with this because we just had a EV fire in Ojai, also part of the county responses. And we had, we took, so when you, and I'm not going to remember the name of the gas that is produced. I believe it's a hydrogen gas. When these batteries get into that free burning stage, this was a hybrid, not a 100% EV vehicle. But we chose to, and we're doing it more often, we will let it burn and evacuate the nearby area because of the dangers of the off-gassing and the products of combustion of an EV vehicle fire. So that's kind of the latest, I guess, procedure to deal with EV fires.
So at this point, there isn't something that can be?
There is a lot of technologies out there that different agencies are using. Some are using roll-off dumpsters, maybe like a lowboy, which is usually used for concrete when it's broken up and taken away. Where they'll submerge the vehicle in that, but it's going to take a crane to pick it up and put it in that. It's a large problem.
So it's still an emerging area of technology to?
Absolutely. And to be, obviously, we see all the Teslas and the different EV vehicles out there. I will tell you also that the Port of Waynimi is a huge importer of batteries and storage and vehicles. So that is a huge concern of ours. We call them RO ROs, the type of shipping container that come in. We had a, a battery operated or EV forklift fire. We put it out. It was pulled outside at the Port of Waynimi. We responded on the same forklift three months later. It caught fire again. It, the batteries reignited. I was shocked, I was like, it's so, it is an emerging technology that I don't think the fire service, other than be safe and protect the public, has a, a good way of extinguishing yet.
I was curious. I had heard someone had told me that they had thought that there'd been one in Ojai that had been just let burn. And I was just curious if that was in fact the case. And if so, if there, if any other departments had other things that they can do for those or not. So I was just curious.
So some of the priorities are life safety, protect ourselves and protect the public. And that's the angle we are taking. That was a 10-hour call. But nobody got hurt, nobody was exposed to the products of combustion. And we're happy to let it burn and not get anybody hurt.
Thank you.
I wondered if you can show the slide that says, states that we had over 400 calls? For ambulance services?
There you go.
We were kind of up there with Camarillo.
Type, that one? 480 responses?
Yeah. You know, I'm curious to know, do we have data that shows how many of those go to the Santa Paula Hospital and how many of those go to Ventura Medical?
Of our responses, so this is not necessarily where our rescue ambulance transport. Like I just mentioned, nine of them were transported by us. So I can look to see if I can get that data for you. I do know that destination matters on numerous things. A trauma will go to VCMC and not to area hospital, the closest, based on the patient's condition. Same thing would happen in Camarillo. If there was a traumatic injury, they would either fall into Los Robles or they would go to VCMC as well. There's two trauma centers. Obviously, I know that, I know V call now or labor generally will go direct to VCMC, whereas in the past, it would have gone through Santa Paula.
I just share my concern because we recently had the closure of the ICU. So I'm trying to get those data to see where, where that impact has been.
So that would, I would need to see if I can obtain AMRs as well as ours.
That'd be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
What would be the difference between unincorporated and non-VNC jurisdiction?
Unincorporated would be areas like parts of Somas, even New Great Park, that's some unincorporated areas. Just aren't, aren't part of city jurisdictions. Non-VNC could be mutual aid responses. A lot of times, we will be the closest resource into areas of LA County. And we'll still respond into them to help them out. So it could be in Westlake Village, it could be in Malibu, it could be in Piru, going eastbound. So we even, we have, we have agreements with all local agencies. So Carpinteria, I guess both of those, mutual aid agreements.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you. It just seems high based on population that are, the responses. Is, does these include the highways? Is that 126, so it would make sense 101, 118 is why the numbers are high?
It does. So it includes all their responses.
Okay, thank you.
We have a question for the public. Is that for procedure sake, we don't take questions from the public on a report?
It is beautiful. It's going to be a beautiful building.
And we're looking forward to the opening of that facility. It's going to just uplift the entire community. And again, thank you for everything you do and your colleagues to keep us safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Now we get to the super exciting stuff, right? Our Finance Department Director, Kristi Ramirez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Public. Like Chief, I'm here to present the department report through December of 2024. The chief is one of the few people that I don't mind following because he uses more numbers and statistics than I do. So he's prepped you for my presentation. The past four months have been eventful in that it's business as usual with less staff, which you've been hearing for quite some time now. Accounts receivable reconciled their quarterlies as they're supposed to. They did their local and state reporting. They were able to catch up on sales tax, which, of sales tax reporting, which we had been behind due to some interdepartmental communication, but we're all caught up. This is for licensing, this is the second busiest phase of the year, the one that just passed. We were issuing business licenses in December. We went through, I want to say, four temps to help us get through that period, maybe five. So we were just trying to, trying to make do. As you know, Daniel has been working both roles and it gets really busy for him. So thankfully, we were able to get it done. And we're now into the second busiest phase, which is the answering the questions, ensuring that everything's been paid. But you'll hear that on your next department report from me. Accounts payable processed over 3,900 invoices. You'll notice that that's a little bit higher than last time. It's because we've moved to a four-month reporting instead of the three-month that we were normally doing. Purchasing process over 100 new purchase orders. They assisted various departments with bid requirements. Utility billing, continue to work with residents on payment arrangements for first-time delinquent accounts. We do have some accounts that were already in a payment arrangement. They fill those arrangements and then they wanted to set up a new arrangement. Our policy states that we can't have multiple arrangements at one time. It's actually a pretty common policy. It's something that was provided in guidance through SB 998. Because then you just keep extending and extending. But we have been working with folks as much as we can. You'll notice payroll is on here. For some reason, payroll has never been on here. They're a vital function of our department and for some reason, we have failed to include them. So they train new staff on time entry processes. They handle multiple retroactive calculations, which is time consuming for them along with reporting. And like the rest of our staff, they process their quarterly reports to the federal and state government agencies that are required. You see this every time. Last time that goodbye was on the bottom section when we said goodbye to Victoria, our other customer service rep. Another month, another report comes by and another goodbye comes by. So Liz, who you see there, was a 29-year veteran of our department. She was the heart and soul of our department and a lot of our customers say of our community because she was the first person that they would speak to. So she is sorely missed. But we were able to fill the accounting specialist position. We did a recruitment for both accounting specialists, customer service reps. The accounting specialist position was filled with Anai, who you see on the left-hand, my left-hand side, as AP. She hit the ground running a lot of the first four months that she took over because she again was, you know, cleaning up some, some temp work and some staffing, internal staffing changes that we had. It was, it was a lot of catch-up for her. But she is now to the phase where we were cutting checks at one point Thursday at 5:00 PM. We're cutting them Wednesday at 3:00 PM. That seems, doesn't seem like a lot, but for us, it's a real, real increase in efficiency. So we're really happy about how things are turning out for us. Oh, that said, we are going to open recruitment for the accounting specialist position and the customer service rep position. Liz's position, we did have filled. We made an offer, which you'll see on the next slide. We have someone named Celeste Medrano, wonderful young lady who has been helping our community this past month start. But we do still have two more openings. Other activities that happened in our department, like I mentioned, we hired the accounting tech for accounts payable. Said goodbye to Liz. And we did close recruitment and made an offer. The, the position started in January. We attended training for a new process for the TDA year-end and completed that process. We've begun the process for the year-end audit for 2324. We completed the overhaul, overhead allocation study and we're ramping up our user fee study. We're hoping to get that completed in the very immediate coming months. So you'll be hearing from us soon on that. Apart from that, are there any questions?
Questions for the council?
Just one quick question. I see that we, we finished our overhead cost allocation study. When, what do we think the timing is on the rest of the?
So the user fee study, we really, we really lit a fire under our departments in December and said, we just, we need to get this completed. As you know, everyone's been really busy, but we just said it needs to get done because we were hoping to get the new fees instituted for July 1st. Of course, we need to notify the public and do a couple of things, come to council and whatnot. The allocation study was needed in order to feed into the user fee study. So right now, we're in the bulk of having staff review their time, what goes into those costs. That will be completed in the next month. And then it's just a wrap-up of the DIF fee studies, so coming months.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Director Ramirez. We are moving along to our city council reports. I'm going to start with Councilmember Crossway.
Right. There hasn't been, I haven't had a ton, a ton of meeting meetings. There have been a lot of events because it was January and we had, I mean, I think, and I think pretty much all of us were at most of them. But we had two ribbon cuttings at the Collective Studio Tattoos and Piercings on Main Street. And then also on Main Street, the grand opening for Park 1055, the new restaurant. So both of those were great celebrations. The Museum of Ventura County has a new show reflecting on, with some different art from their permanent collection that reflects on different aspects of beauty. And the, one of our local artists was the sort of headline image for that, from Mr. Nichols. So his, his photograph of his wife was their, one of their headline pieces. We had the, the Santa Paula Art Museum has a new show. So if you haven't seen it, please go by and check it out. And then the mayor and vice mayor were busy, so I did attend the final, SCE's final PSPS briefing call. Just so that the public knows, the elected officials on that call were just as frustrated with you were with, in terms of communication from Edison around the events and the confusing alerts. And so anyway, just, just so you know, Edison is very aware of the elected officials and the public's frustrations around the fires. Or I guess not the fires, the lack of fires, but the power being off. So just so you know, they are very aware. I did go up to Sacramento with the Clean Power Alliance and had some really interesting meetings, as you can imagine. Wildfire Recovery was at the top of pretty much everyone's mind that we met with. And then, of course, utility affordability. And the big part of utility affordability has to do with the infrastructure, more so than the actual electricity itself. If you actually ever look at your bill, the largest part of your bill and the part that's gone up the most is for the delivery, which is the lines, not your actual usage. And so we were having conversations with the electeds up in Sacramento around what are some things that can potentially be done? How could we get creative to help bring down some of those costs? And then if, I'm sure you all probably heard about the battery fire up in Los Landing, which is part of what I was also thinking about. And one of the things that I learned while I was up there is that part of the reason why that fire was as bad as it was was because, one, it was an older battery technology. And two, it was built before, now best practice is that each battery be contained in its own fireproof shipping container. That plant was built with all 300 of the batteries stacked on top of each other in one building. And so that's part of why that fire in particular has been so difficult to put out and why it was so devastating and why everything caught on fire. So just, I didn't think that that would maybe, because I'm sure we'd all have heard about it. So I just thought I would share that information that I learned while I was up there. It's also going to the board tomorrow. I attended a meeting where we were looking at potentially making, having the Clean Power Alliance make an interim rate adjustment. The long story short is that we're taking to the board tomorrow to consider lowering the rate for the rest of this fiscal year. And so the new rates would be for July because of some lowering that Edison was given by the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission. So in order to keep the Clean Power Alliance rates in line with Edison, we will be taking a reduction rate to the board at the meeting tomorrow that would then go into effect March 1st if it's approved. I think it will likely be approved, but until the board actually meets, you don't know. And then the Southern California Association of Governments, I'm on the legislative committee and we are recommending a state legislative and we are recommending a state legislative platform to the full board at the meeting tomorrow for adoption. And then I think the other, the only other thing that I will mention is we had our employee recognition, service recognition breakfast this week and it was great to recognize our employees from, you know, those that served five years with the city up to those that served, have served 30 years with the city. You know, it's rare these days that someone stays with an organization for 30 years and so it was great to be able to recognize employees at all of those different levels and celebrate all of the ways that they contribute to our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cornejo?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I'll go through my list of the things I've done since our last meeting. One is I attended the first, my first meeting for the VRSD, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. Learning a lot, the learning curve as I get involved in that organization on behalf of the city. And again, attended the Park 1055 grand opening, well received and very hopeful that they and the other new businesses in the city that are opening are a great success and helped to contribute to our great city and tax base. I attended the Harding Park Advisory Meeting and then on the 30th, the Business Roundtable. I think some other council members attended the Business Roundtable. And there is a great, that's really put on both by city and chamber. I thank James for putting on a great, James Mason for putting on a great presentation there. And there was a lot of energy in the room, business owners and the future and wanting to be involved. And it's just really exciting to see that interest and energy. On the third, on Monday, the city manager, Mayor, and I attended a meeting at the Government Center, County Government Center regarding the hospital proposal and attended by invitation by the county CEO, was called by County Supervisor Kelly Long and her staff. And it was all along with representatives from Limanera, Mayor from Fillmore, all interested parties to put our heads together to maybe do some brainstorming and troubleshooting to see what, if anything, is perhaps delaying progress on moving the hospital forward. So it was an excellent meeting. I can let the mayor mention as well when he has his chance to speak. But I think the main point from this, from the county supervisor, who kept repeating that the county is supportive of the hospital, it is not forgotten, it is in progress, they are trying to figure out what needs to be done in order to move it forward. And then on the fourth, I attended the breakfast, as mentioned by Councilmember Crossway, well-attended, which is also nice to see that when the city put on an event, that the city employees all came. It was a full house, all congratulating fellow employees. And this morning, I just had a brief catch-up coffee with Alex Teague regarding the recycled water project. Thank you.
Member Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. It's always a great experience to celebrate birthdays with the employees. Each month, they celebrate that employee's birthday and that's an opportunity for them to, some of them meet each other for the first time, believe it or not, in the city. And that happened on the 16th of this month. I also attended the ribbon cutting at 1055. Most folks would know that that used to be a tire company and auto shop, but what a transformation and just a gorgeous and beautiful place. Whenever you go in there, you all see people you've never seen before. So it's obviously also attracting our local residents and people from the outside. Mayor Chavez had a, called a brief meeting with us and Mayor and Vice Mayor Fillmore, just a real brief discussion to get together. This was at Park 1055 and several subjects came up, but, you know, one of the important things, of course, was having a hospital that would be a great benefit for Fillmore and Santa Paula to have instead of transporting patients all the way to Ventura. Tomorrow is a senior advisory committee meeting. It's at 1:30 at the Community Center. I do realize that we have one vacancy, so we're accepting applications. You have to be a senior, live in the city. We welcome you to apply. And I just want to have everybody mark their calendars for Monday, June 16th. In 1975, Rotary buried a time capsule right outside here in the middle of the lawn. And so Rotary is making plans to dig it up on Monday, June 16th of this year, and it'll be in the ground 50 years and we'll have to see what's in there. I'm hoping it has not only Rotary stuff, but also City of Santa Paula items. And then we also have another time capsule that we're ready to bury either in the same place or somewhere else in town. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. In terms of my report, the council members mentioned, there's a lot going on, obviously, and rest assured that you have representation, vocal representatives serving on the best interests of the city. So I want to acknowledge and commend the council members who continuously participate and share their voice and advocate because we do have a united front. And that's really important as we're dealing with issues that are extremely important for our residents, but also to the entire region, in particular, the hospital, for instance, as an example of that. You know, recently, as mayor, you know, each mayor, that takes a turn, each individual takes a turn to be mayor, and this year is my turn and I got to sit with other mayors through what's called the City Selection Committee. And what that is, is there's county-wide boards and associations where the mayors get to decide who's going to represent them. And so I was like, I've been serving on the Association of Water Agencies and I was renewed for another four years, two years, sorry. And then I was newly appointed to the Air Pollution Control Board. Again, as a council member in a region that has an airport, it's really important for us, Santa Paula, to devastate our issues as they impact our people and community. You know, last year, Santa Paula was put on the map because we received the most scholarships from our young people through the Premier America Scholarship Program. And it was just announced again, so if there's any young people that are graduating from high school and looking for scholarship money, please go to Premier America Foundation and apply. Last year, we recognized them. Mayor Cornejo recognized these students and they were just amazed at how many student winners were from Santa Paula. So that was really positive for our community. As was previously mentioned, we had an employee recognition that took place earlier this week, yesterday. Was it yesterday? Yeah, it was yesterday. And I do want to call these individuals' names because these are the folks that do the job, the tireless job of making sure our city functions. So for five years, I see Greg Barnett's in the room, Anna Mel Galván for the Police Department, Beatriz Jimenez, Finance, Richard Prebble from the Police Department, Kristi Ramirez who's here from the Finance Department, Maria Renteria from Finance, Dan Singer, our city manager for five years, Officer Solis who was here earlier, five years, Melissa Valenzuela from Parks and Rec, and Rich Williamson from IT. 10 years, Tom Tarantino, Wave Tom, 10 years with our Community Development Department. Raquel Arriola from our Human Resources, 20 years. And 30 years from our Police Department, Allison Fosse. You know, when you turn on the water, the faucet, the water runs, right? But there's a whole behind-the-scenes thing that happens. You know, our parks are maintained, our police, our public safety officers are out there in the community. So I just want to acknowledge our city employees and we have always opportunities here in the city, like Vice Mayor mentioned, to celebrate their birthdays or recognize them, but they do the tireless job day in and day out in supporting to acknowledge their commitment and their efforts. I will end by saying, stating that we recognized some employees of the fourth quarter, and that was Daniel Blanco from the Finance Department and Brittany Najera. So they were employees of the fourth quarter. And then we had two employees of the year that we recognized and that happens to be Commander Starnah, who was here earlier today, and Javier Cancino, who recently got promoted, correct, to Building Safety Inspector. So again, congratulations to everyone that makes Santa Paula work. And last council meeting, the one before, we recognized a young man and a group of youth that are part of a boxing club or boxing school. And this Saturday, actually, Gilbert Perez, Gilberto Perez, will be representing Santa Paula at this international boxing tournament in San Diego. So we all wish him well. I'm going to be posting a link so people can see and root for him online. It's a big deal to see that we have young people that are putting, again, Santa Paula on the map for their respective sport. So with that, I'll end with that. And we're going to go on to the next agenda item, which is city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things real quickly. I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that Regional Sports Park is open right now and we will be doing the grand opening later this spring, but just a great facility. And if you haven't had a chance, check it out, check that out. Want to mention, this time of year is really busy. Ms. Ramirez talked a little bit about it, but we're in the midst of budget, council strategic goals, and MOUs for the bargaining unit. So it's going to be an interesting three, four months with the city, a lot of things going on. And finally, I wanted to mention, we opened up the facade improvement program for applications, received eight applications in the last week. So that's really exciting. So what the next plans are next week, to do a workshop with those folks and just walk through process and expectations. We'll keep you posted. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions for city manager?
Just a quick comment on the facade program. I think that you mentioned that in other cities that they'd tried a project like that and had not been successful with maybe only having one or two applications. So to already have eight means that the committee and the department are doing something right and putting out a program that's interesting to people. So I wish you great success and I'm really glad that, and the P-Bid Committee is really glad that it's ready now.
Thank you. And I think really hats off to a lot of folks, the fellows, the chamber, the mayor. It's about, this town is an analog town. We talk to each other, we engage each other. And if we expect to get results from something like this by just sending out a mail or an email, it's not going to happen. We've got to build trust with our community.
Said, thank you. We're moving on to agenda item number nine, consent calendar. Is there any council member that would like to poll an item? If so, what is that item?
Nine I.
Nine I. Any other item to be polled? I will mention, for the record, that I'd like to recuse myself from nine D and nine F due to my association as a property owner at Harvest.
D and F?
D and F.
To clarify for the public, the mayor may remain seated during the consent vote and only if the items polled does he need to leave the room.
Is there a motion?
So I would move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of nine I.
And F. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Motion, is there a second? Any clarification? No? All right, all those in favor say I.
I.
All those opposed? None? Okay, motion carries. All right, so now we're going to item nine I since it's been polled. Councilmember Crossway, you want to lead the conversation?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions if our public works director. So the first question, and I did ask him, but in case anyone else had the same question, it had talked in the packet about the stalls all being ADA compliant. And so if you could clarify what that, what the intention is for that section?
So there will be four stalls where vehicles can be charged, two separate machines with two lines, two charging lines on each. Those will be located at the, along the south side of the parking lot, adjacent to the skate park, so right in that corner. And the rest of the park, or the parking lot will continue to serve as it has. There will be, the ADA compliance, there's a couple of things about ADA compliance. The lot can't be sloped more than, well, 2%. So that's one of the reasons that we selected that lot, that parking lot, is because the slope for ADA compliance. And then, of course, the spacing has to be adequate. But the requirement is that one of those four has to be ADA compliant. So that's what we'll have.
And so that will be clarified in the, yeah, because it says in there that they will all be. And I was like, well, that's going to take up that whole row if each one needs an open spot next to it, so.
That's not the intent. And we will make sure that that is clarified when the ARFP goes out.
And then my other question was whether or not we could have language in here that they propose, like that the proposal can, offer a consideration for backup power.
And we can certainly add that.
Not that it's a requirement, but.
Yes, and if we wanted it to be a requirement, we could add that. And it's something the council member pointed out to me during these last fires, it was difficult for people who had electric vehicles to find someplace where they could charge their vehicles. And so people were, you know, looking all around because there was so much power was turned off. Charging stations were not available to recharge batteries, people couldn't get home. So what we would probably do in this case is not try and go with solar panels or something like that to charge the batteries, but just charge the batteries with the power from the power company and those batteries would be available if the power goes out.
It's just something to look at. It may be either not feasible or it may turn out that that site never gets turned off or, I mean, there may be reasons not to do it too, but, right. I just think it's worth putting it as an option and they may tell you why that doesn't work.
And we can clarify that as well in the ARFP.
And then the only other question I had was, is there, is there a reason why we're only looking for level two?
Level two is actually kind of the sweet spot in charging stations. Level three chargers are fast chargers. They require a lot more power, a lot more expense to put those in. And then level one are very slow. So the sweet spot is that level two, where you get the most bang for your buck, as the saying goes. Where we're looking for proposals in which the city doesn't have to provide any funding. So the entire project is funded by the proposer. It's a design, build, own and operate situation on city property. That's the sweet spot for them as well. To bring in the kind of power that would be necessary would cost a lot more. And then instead of having, say, a five-year or a 10-year period where they would want to operate that to make their money back, they might want 20 years or something like that because it would cost so much more to bring in power for fast chargers, level three chargers.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Looking at that picture, I see that the parking stalls are going to be on the south end of that parking lot. And I think the grade is, what, 10% for grade and then 2% side slope? And the only concern I have is that's going to be where water pools. Is there any concern about electricity next to standing water if it's only got a 2% drain?
That's a fair question and I unfortunately don't have an answer, but the city engineer is here and maybe he knows something about that.
Typically, 2% is enough to drain off the water that may accumulate and most of these chargers do have an elevation to their basis from energized components. So we can certainly add that criteria to the design when we have the contractor come on board to make those improvements.
Yeah, and I realize that sometimes you have those islands, so if there are lines that go north, I mean, I wouldn't want water to pool in there, so it'd be some water for the escape to get out onto the street, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So I would move approval of the item with the edits to the RFQ, RFP, I don't remember which, as was discussed. I don't remember which one, as was discussed. And also the correction of Memorial Park to Veterans Memorial Park. I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item 10, our public hearing today on ordinance number 1341, designating the Tower Theater a historic landmark. We're going to invite our staff, member, Mr. Tarantino, to lead us in this discussion. Just for procedural sake, I just have to go through this checklist, correct? All right, so verification of posting notice by the clerk?
Yes.
Of conflict, if any? Declaration of ex parte contact, if any? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Mr. Tarantino?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Pretty excited to bring this to you tonight. We're supposed to be impartial, but it's difficult with this one. It is the introduction of ordinance number 1341, designating the Tower Theater at 982 East Main Street as a city historic landmark. Very brief background to get started. The Tower Theater was first opened as the Electra Theater in 1911. The Tower Theater is Santa Paula's last single-screen movie theater and is Ventura County's oldest purpose-built movie theater known to exist. Despite various proposals for reuse of this space, the Tower Theater has been closed for over 50 years. However, its main street setting is intact and unchanged. And you'll get additional and far more colorful historical details in Mr. Paul's presentation following mine. If you're, it'll be my third time hearing it, and if you're history nerd like me, it's fascinating history, so look forward to that. It is under new ownership. The current owner of the Tower Theater is Mr. David Berger, who's here with us tonight as well. Mr. Berger also owns the 110-year-old Ojai Playhouse, which just completed a multimillion-dollar restoration and reopened to the public in late 2024. He has a similar vision for restoration of the Tower Theater and thus initiated the historic landmark designation process now being considered. So a quick walkthrough, City Council Ordinance 816, which is the process for designating historic landmark. It's a three-part process. Design Assistance Committee meeting, Historic Preservation Commission meeting, and then City Council meeting tonight. The DAC meeting was held on Halloween, October 31st of last year, where they recommended the Planning Commission, wearing their Historic Preservation Commission hat, they are one and the same, recommended they hold a hearing to consider recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance designating the building as a historic landmark. So then, the Planning Commission, again, acting as their role as the Historic Preservation Commission, held a hearing on December 10th of last year and approved Resolution Number 3863, determining the criteria were met for historic landmark designation and recommending this council adopt an ordinance to officially designate. So tonight's meeting is the, again, the third step in the process, where the council holds a hearing to consider Historic Preservation Commission recommendation and introduction of an ordinance to officially designate. And like any other ordinance, if it is introduced tonight, then the ordinance will return to the council at the next meeting on February 19th for second reading and adoption on consent. So a little more detail on council ordinance, ordinance 816, the criteria and findings that have to be met. Staff did identify, and the Historic Preservation Commission confirmed, that the Tower Theater is eligible for city landmark designation based on the criteria within City Council Ordinance 816. And it's based on the following criteria. Again, there's, it's a three-part deal. So criteria one, historical and cultural significance, it is consistent, based on the following. The proposed landmark is particularly representative of a distinct historical period, type, style, region, or way of life. The proposed landmark is an example of a type of building which was once common but is now rare. The proposed landmark is of a greater age than most of its kind. The proposed landmark is connected with a business or use which was once common but is now rare. The architect or builder was locally or nationally renowned. And the site is the location of a significant local or national event. And again, when Mr. Paul gives his presentation, all of this will be quite clear. So the second part, second criteria, historical, architectural, and engineering significance, it is consistent, based on the construction materials or engineering methods used in the proposed landmark are unusual or significant or uniquely effective. And the overall effect of the design of the proposed landmark is beautiful, or its details and materials are beautiful or unusual. And then the last criteria, neighborhood and geographic setting, it is consistent, as the proposed landmark materially benefits the historic character of the neighborhood. And the proposed landmark in its location represents an established and familiar visual feature of the neighborhood, community, or city. So like everything else, there's always concern about future maintenance and who's responsible. And to clarify that, SPMC 163350 requires the owner or individual, individual in charge of a designated landmark to maintain that landmark in good condition, in accordance with City Council Ordinance Number 816. If the owner or individual in charge fails to make the necessary improvements for maintenance, the city may make the improvements and charge the cost as a lien against the property. And again, the landmark status is binding upon future owners. So if it were to change hands, it will still be in effect. And it remains in effect unless it's formally rescinded by the City Council. So regarding future alterations to the building, future significant alterations to the Tower Theater would be subject to a public hearing and issuance of a certificate of appropriateness, or CA, by the Historic Preservation Commission, prior to the work being done. So any changes they want to make need to come back to the Historic Preservation Commission. The CA is triggered by any significant alteration, restoration, construction, removal, or demolition, unless the building official declares the subject structure unsafe, for example, in the case of an earthquake or fire or similar. And then minor changes can be approved at staff level by the CED director or the building official. So things like paint, as long as it aligns with the color chart for the building, changes to signage, that kind of thing, would not have to come back for formal certificate of appropriateness. It could be approved at staff level. We asked some questions in prior meetings about the Mills Act, so I wanted to touch on that briefly tonight. The Mills Act exists in California Government Code, Section 50280. If the Tower Theater is designated a historic landmark, the owner will be eligible to enter a Mills Act agreement with the city. The Mills Act is already codified in the Santa Paula Municipal Code, Chapter 16.34, and it authorizes the city to enter into agreements with private owners of qualified historical property for rehabilitation, restoration, preservation, and maintenance of that property to provide an incentive for property owners by allowing certain tax reductions pursuant to the California Revenue and Tax Code. Implementation of the Mills Act is a lengthy process, not dissimilar to getting historic landmark designation, and it requires several public hearings and final approval by the City Council. The Mills Act is not a part of the current application. However, designation as a landmark would be a significant first step if they wanted to pursue that in the future. And to date, only one of the property in town, the Glen Tavern Inn, carries a Mills Act designation. In regards to SEQA, the project is exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations, subject to Section 15308, Class 8, and 15331 and Class 31. And for anybody who lives and breathes SEQA, the Class 8 is in regard to protection of the environment, and it does include designation of historic landmarks for preservation. And a Class 31 is regarding historical restoration and rehabilitation. The project was properly noticed, a public, notice of public hearing ran in the Santa Paula Times on Wednesday, January 22nd. Notice postcards went out to a 300-foot radius of the parcel, and a sign was posted on-site, within public view. Hopefully, it's still there. It's been windy and rainy, but it was posted. So in addition to the recommended action that will follow, the City Council has available two of the following alternative options. One would be to disapprove the landmark designation and not introduce proposed ordinance 1341. Two would be to direct staff to modify the proposed ordinance and bring it back to you for reintroduction. But we are recommending that you waive the first reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 1341 entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Paula, identifying the Tower Theater at 982 East Main Street as a historic landmark pursuant to Santa Paula Municipal Code, Chapter 16.33, and in accordance with City Council Ordinance Number 816, and define the act, the action to be categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations. And we do have the applicant and the representative, I think they're still here, David Berger and Daniel Paul, the architectural historian. Like I said, this will be his third time giving this presentation, so I don't know if he gets an award or something, but we thank him for his perseverance in going through all of these meetings. And again, it is fascinating, so I'll hand it off to him.
All right, gentlemen, please come up to the podium.
This feels very familiar. Okay, do we have the PowerPoint? All right. My name is Daniel Paul. I'm a federally qualified architectural historian. Thank you very much for having me tonight to present on Tower. It has been just really lovely getting acquainted with this incredible town. What a treasure. So I'm going to step through a couple of things tonight. Some of it was just presented. I'm going to introduce, I'm going to talk a little bit at first about the criterion eligibility in Santa Paula, and how I felt that this resource met that as a landmark. Specifically, there are three criteria that we focused on, one, two, and three. And within those, as Mr. Tarantino mentioned, historic and cultural significance. The proposed landmark is an example of a type of building which was once common but is now rare. This is an example of what's called a store theater or a Nickelodeon. These are among the very earliest purpose-built movie theaters that exist, the very first. Before that, it was vaudeville or something converted from something else. And that is criterion one, Part B. Part C, the proposed landmark is of a greater age than most of its kind. Most of its kind. In Ventura County, the Tower Theater is older than all of its kind. This is the oldest movie theater in Ventura County that we are aware of. It opened in October of 1911. Criterion one, Part F, the site is the location of a significant or local or national event. I'm going to save that, because I think that's extra special. Number two, historic, architectural, and engineering significance. Number two, Part B, the overall effect of the design of the proposed landmark is beautiful, or its details and materials are beautiful or unusual. This is typically where we talk about style. So this is considered an important example of the modern design system, M-O-D-E-R-N, with an E at the end, and I'm going to show some pictures of that in a minute. And then finally, number three, neighborhood and geographic setting. The proposed landmark materially benefits the historic character of the neighborhood. And B, the proposed landmark in its location represents an established and familiar visual feature of the neighborhood, community, or city. I'm not so sure anybody in Santa Paula needs me to tell them about both of those things for this, for this building as someone from the outside. So I'm going to run through some pictures. We start off at the beginning. Here's some early press from August 11th, 1911, announcing the construction of the building that, at the time, was called the Electra. And the Electra was made in concurrence with that large building on the corner of 10th and Main, which is still there, and is not part of this. It's a separate parcel, it's not part of this designation, but that was called the Bennison Block. And both buildings were made at the same time by the same builder, Lydhamore Little, a local firm. So both buildings have been there quite a while, and it was announced even before, from the very beginning. If you look, I don't know if this has a laser. Oh, there we go, a green laser, that's interesting. I've never seen one of those before. This is called an Espadilla Parapet. It's kind of a Mission-style feature, you can see it's still there. This is, all of this under construction in August of 1911. So this feature has been there the whole time, over 100 and, what is that, plus 114 years. So it's been there quite a while. The Electra Theater opened on October 21st, 1911, and there's something very interesting happening very early on with this, with this movie theater. Even on opening night, we don't know what the movies were. We know that there were two. But they had what they mentioned as a Mexican orchestra, which is interesting. It's like, okay, that's different for the time. But what we realized very early on is that this theater was catering to Santa Paula's Mexican community from the very beginning, which is very, very unusual, especially considering some of the early history around, well, for lack of a better word, segregation treatment. On the first Christmas Eve that this movie theater existed, it was showing Mexican-language movies very, very early on. Here it's about, this is an article about what's going to be shown, and, including the most exciting bullfight ever shown. That's what, that's their words. So that's pretty highfalutin', it must have been an amazing bullfight. I have some other images here, an early, there were also English-language movies shown, of course, the Electra Theater, which is what it was originally known as. Here's something for Charlie Chaplin. A lot of these movie theaters, early on, because they were the largest sort of auditorium or a primary auditorium, they had other events. There were cooking classes taught here. Here we have the rosary, you know, in case, you know, you just feel like having the rosary on a Thursday night. I guess they didn't have it at the Catholic Church that evening. But they certainly, these early store theaters doubled as halls for the community with community events. So the Electra goes out of business around World War I. And it went dark in 1919, the same year that another theater in Santa Paula appeared called the Glen City. In 1922, it reopens as the Mission Theater. And this is where things start to get really interesting. By 1925, there's a manager there named Stephen Brown, who's originally, I think he's originally from LA, but grew up in El Paso, and spent his childhood going to Mexico, which is going to play into what is about to happen at this theater, which by then is known as the Mission Theater, or Teatro Mission. Very early on, by 1925, Mr. Brown is doing specific programming for La Colonia. And doing so west of 10th Street, which was kind of a dividing line for La Colonia from other, from the Caucasian community in Santa Paula, and he had no problem with people coming to his theater on that side of town. Mr. Brown acquired the business in 1927, and here, this was in a national publication about Alaskan adventures, but this is the front of the tower back then. It does look a little bit different at the bottom, there have been some alterations. And you also had in Santa Paula a Spanish-language paper called The Voice of the Colon, La Voz de la Colonia. And the editor there was Manuel Reyes. Manuel Reyes and Stephen Brown were good friends, and Manuel Reyes deeply respected Mr. Brown, because Mr. Brown had no qualms back then, in the 1920s, about opening up his theater to La Colonia, which was remarkably bold at the time. There is no evidence, I did interviews, I have come across nothing indicating that this theater was ever segregated, which is very, very rare for that time. this theater was ever segregated, which is very, very rare for that time. Mexican community would have been allowed in certain theaters, but they would have had to sit on one side. That does not appear to have been, ever been the case here. And, and here, in fact, I have two ads for Le Mesurat for, in La Voz, and in the local Santa Paula paper, The Chronicle, and it's announcing, I don't have it here, tomorrow, yeah, I don't have the dates, but basically, these were, these were two separate ads for showing Le Mesurat the same day, to the same, to the English and Spanish-language community. So again, no qualms about, about having people from the Mexican community, from La Colonia, to come over to the other side of 10th Street and see a movie. Very, very distinctive for that time. Mr. Brown, and here's a great ad, this is at, playing at the Mission, when it was known as the Mission, Teatro Mission, vaudeville, veria dades, here's a band here, actors. This is hard to read, but basically, he has the star of Tarzan, Frank Merrill, and he's announcing this to the, to the colony, to come over and try to win $25. So again, having a Caucasian actor in a very well-known, you know, series or movie, but, but opening it up to the Spanish-language community, just remarkable for the time. I'm not going to read all of this, but out here, but I, and, please forgive me if I get anything wrong, I want to read a little bit of this, and I got it off one of the translation programs, so again, Spanish is not my first language, but what this says in so many words, it's worth reading. This is from April 17th, 1930, and this was in, in La Voz de la Colonia. One of the best, and one of the best pieces, and by then, I'm sorry, the theater's known as the Columbia Theater once it shows talkies. This is the quote, it's two paragraphs. "One of the best pieces of news for the Mexican community in this place is undoubtedly what Mr. Brown, manager of the Columbia Theater, is bringing to the Mexican community today. The management of this little theater, which has always been able to respond in spades to the patronage of this community, and which is the only one where Mexicans can sit down with complete confidence, is making today the wonderful announcement of its first Spanish-language film with a distinctly Mexican flavor, which it will show next Wednesday entitled La Rosa de Fuego. The management of this theater does not spare any cost to acquire films that are the pride of our race, as well as when announcing them, it says very clearly, 'for Mexicans,' without fear that others will get angry. Mr. Brown has always opened the doors of his showhouse to our race, and with this, it is enough to be able to appreciate how much he esteems it. There have been instances in this plaza of certain places where Mexicans are repulsive, and they have been told so in the clear, but nevertheless, this, it matters little to our colony." So in so many words, this was a safe place. This was an open place. The Tower, what's known today as the Tower Theater was an open place for this community, and, and it was open nearly 100 years ago, decades before segregation, you know, began to really terminate. So, anyway, I'll jump through some of this really quickly, I know, I don't want to, you know, we probably don't want to be here all night, but I'll just jump through some of this fast. Later on, the theater gets known as The Lyric, it has a different owner. Mr. Brown goes over to Oxnard, opens another theater there. And one thing that's interesting, when we do this research, we always try to find out any names associated with, any names associated with the theater. And I found a manager named Dionisio Acosta, and, and Mr. Acosta turned out to be a pretty significant individual. He had a band, he was a manager at one of the LA theaters that was demolished to build the 101. And he had a band called Las, Las Cantioneros Acosta, the Acosta Singers. And this was the first Spanish-language band to have recordings in the United States from multiple American record labels, RCA, Columbia, all of them. And Mr. Acosta put that band together, it had kind of a rotating cast of singers, and so he himself is kind of important, and his Acosta Singers were important, the first to be recorded on, you know, 78s as they were known back then. And he was a manager at The Lyric. So finally, it become, it gets acquired by Fox West Coast in 1940, they gussy it up, and they reopen it as the Tower. The design system here is the modern design system, modern with an E at the end, which is kind of a softened version of modernism. The idea here was, modern-style architecture, sometimes the close cousin, or the more vernacular cousin of streamlined modern, is informed by, you know, it was considered up-to-date, it was informed by industrial design. It was, it meant to reference cruise liners and steamships, and it was all seen as very contemporary, the neon, the, the rounded shapes, you know, a lot of circles, and this, that marquee is still there, even though some of the neon could, you know, will probably need to be restored. It appears that, well, Fox West Coast did this to, to your theater, to the Tower, the primary architect at Fox West Coast was a man named S. Charles Lee. S. Charles Lee was the primary movie theater designer in the United States at that time, and he was the guy for the whole US. I was not able, unfortunately, to find a, you know, an ideal link indicating that Mr. Lee designed the Tower Theater, but if he didn't, it was definitely people working under him. These are S. Charles Lee designs for other Tower Theaters in Compton, I think these are both Compton, and you can see the similarities with the way the marquee is handled. You don't really have a monument blade here, I think he wanted to preserve the espadonia parapet, so there's like a little one here, and this sort of very, you know, of-the-era font. And then on the inside, so this motif here with the circles is very much a modern motif. Here's a rendering S. Charles Lee did of a movie theater, you can see he's using it here, and I think this is Fresno over here, the Tower Theater, and you can see the circle motif in there. It's a little bit more fancy, but you can see, you can see the connection and see how it's echoed. So if it wasn't S. Charles Lee, it was definitely his people, his staff, trying to sort of follow what he, what he wants. So that's a pretty significant architect. S. Charles Lee did some of the movie theaters in downtown LA. His very first theater in downtown LA was called The Tower, it's still there, it just became an Apple Store of all things, but they did a pretty good job saving a lot of it. I heard a vintage theater became an Apple Store, normally I'd be quite scared, just thinking they whitewashed it, but it turned out good, they saved a lot. So this is, that's the inside. By the 19, by 1940, Fox West Coast by the early 50s, I don't know if the theater went dark, La Voz de la Colonia went under, the newspaper went under during the Great Depression. There's very little advertising for the Tower Theater for a while, but that's probably because the primary media for the, for the La Colonia was radio and not news, you didn't have a Spanish-language newspaper anymore. So far, we know they were probably advertising it on the radio the whole time, and it may have been known as Teatro Torre then, even though I didn't come across anything, I'm assuming it probably was referenced as Teatro Torre. These are some early postcards of it, and this is from the 50s, and you can see even through the 50s, they continue showing Spanish-language movies. By then, there's another movie theater in Santa Paula, I think there was a Fox, and before that, there was another one that burned. Here's some of the Spanish-language movies, I'm not going to go into all of it here, but I do want to mention that something a lot of people don't realize is that during World War II, when the US was busy fighting, Mexico became an ally. And the, one of the things that Hollywood did, the US did, for Mexico, knowing that Mexico already had a good reputation for movie-making, was they taught them even more how to make, how to, like, refine movies, brought directors' equipment down to Mexico, gave the Mexican government film, and Mexico during the World War II era was considered the primary country for fine cinema worldwide. A lot of people don't realize this. So Maria Candelaria, that beautiful poster on the left, that won the Palme d'Or at Cannes Film Festival in 1943. So this is really, really sophisticated work coming out of Mexico. And aside from this, the Mexican population saw movies as a way to sort of retain their identity in the new land, and movie-going became incredibly popular with, with Mexican families in the US before the advent of television. In some ways, it was more popular in the US than it was in, in Mexico. It served as kind of a sentimental reminder of home and a way to sort of remember Mexican identity. Mehikani Dodd, pardon me if I said that wrong. But, so there was a lot of, a lot of identity wrapped up with going to the movies with the family. One study in the late 30s found that the, an average, in one part of San Diego that was studied, probably near Barrio Logan, the average Mexican family went to the movies 50 times a year, the average family. This was about 1938, a study was done. So going to the movies was incredibly important, it wasn't just, it seems like it was something more than just recreation. It had a deep meaning. And these Mexican movies, cinema in the US only became more sort of regarded and popular after the advent of the Bracero Program in 1942, when you had hundreds of thousands of, of workers here, and Ventura County was one of the primary centers for the Bracero Program in the US. So, and you only had two Spanish-focused movie cinemas in Ventura County at that time. You had one in Oxnard, and you had this one, and that was it. Oh, what just happened? There we go. Toward the end of its life, this is a note here from Gordon West, who purchased the theater in 1956. Mr. West, by, by 1956, the theater was, it seems like it was probably dark for a while, whoever owned it before, it went out of business for a little bit. You had the Fox Theater, and there was an incident there where, where a group of Mexican boys wanted to sit on one side of the theater, and the usher tried to tell them not to, and they, and they insisted, they said, no, this is where we want to sit. And they left, and there was an incident. Eventually, the Fox relented, but it caused enough of an uproar to where the following year after that, Gordon West purchased this, purchased the Tower and made it primary, he had seems, even though he showed English-language movies, he also, he made it primarily, it seems like it was primarily a Mexican-language movie theater through the rest of the 50s and the 60s. It closed in 1973, when West took the lease to show movies at the Fox, so by the late, mid to late 70s, it seems like Gordon West was showing them there. In 1981, the Fox Theater, the other theater in town, was demolished, and West wanted to reopen this theater, which had been closed since 73, and this is a little note, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it talks about the Mexican people of Santa Paula wanted theater. Again, so even in the early 80s, he's trying to give something to the, the community now that the Fox is being demolished, and there were seismic issues with this and building permit issues. In 1995, the City of Santa Paula actually purchased the theater as a means to, it seems as, like, as a means to make sure it didn't get demolished. And in 2003, there was a seismic upgrade done that kind of gutted a lot of it, understandably, whatever cloth or screens or stuff was in there, probably was in not-so-good shape, it hadn't been used since 73. And it's also worth saying that over the course of its life from 1911, the same materials were not in there from 1911, it had probably seen some renovations over time. But there's a lot left. You have this interesting little sort of foyer here with these arches, the early projectors from the 1940s are still tucked away up there, you have this beautiful, the interior, the interior has been, obviously, it's been gutted, most of it, even though the murals are still there on the side or the, the wall art, but that volume, that sort of shotgun volume of a thin, long box-like volume, that is very indicative of early store theaters, of early Nickelodeons, and this still retains that. And it even retains this little underground space near where the screen would be, and there were vaudeville acts here really early on, and this is probably, this probably served as their dressing room, there was no other place to sort of change or get ready or do anything, so you kind of went into this little cave and then came out in your, you know, there was a little stage there, and came out in your garb. There's a little screen-hidden window back here that seems to be original to 1911, it's sort of behind the marquee, so there's little elements that are, that are left. So, to conclude, the Tower Theater still retains its integrity of modern design, particularly at its street face. It retains its volume on the inside, it retains certain elements within, and the fact that that space is still retained, this is not just a facade we're thinking about preserving here, the fact that that space is retained, that is the very space that's still there, where, where all of this history happened, including some aspects and historical chapters that seem to have been quite special and, and ahead of their time for Santa Pa, not just for Santa Paula, but for the larger Ventura County region, and, you know, ahead of their time for just about anywhere, anywhere else in terms of breaking down segregation and, and doing so, so early and in a way that was so out front. So, we hope you support this. I thank you for your time, I know I went over my three minutes, I'm sorry about that, and I, I hope this was interesting. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for enriching us with that history, that very important history. At this point, are there any questions from the council?
Yeah? Jenny?
I just have one question. So on your slide about the Mills Act, it said that there are, it's a lengthy process with several public hearings. Is that normal? Like, is that, or is that Santa Paula-specific, that that's what the process looks like?
I believe that's the normal process, it's from the state, yeah.
Okay, so that's what government code says, not our, because I know the government code and our city.
Yeah, the, what's, in the municipal code is, is reflective of, of the government code.
I know that I had originally been told that we had made ours more stringent, and so I just didn't know if that was...
Well, the one thing that we did do, and that's one thing that we'll be bringing to planning commission and council, is right now, its only designation can be commercial buildings, and that's why the Glen Tavern, and that's one thing that Santa Paula did exclusively, and it was, and the longer story in that was to kind of retain a property tax. We have a different world right now as far as property tax for the city, so, and historic preservation is a priority as far as our amenities in this community, so that's a direction we're going to go.
Thank you.
One question, and actually quite a few comments, but my question is, you had mentioned that there's a process that the council could rescind the historical status. What would, what would that entail if that were to ever come about?
Again, we've only done one other one, so it would, it would be a new process for us, but it's basically just a reversal of, of the current ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, does that, if the city attorney has any, does that...
We'll be updating the historic...
Historic landmark ordinance, and taking any, any input from our public hearings that we hold.
And I guess the follow-up to that is, what would that do to the status? Like, right now, obviously, if you designate it, there's certain things you can't change, you can't do, but if you rescind it, then what, it reverses back to just a building, apparently, or?
In most cases, when you rescind, it's usually, I'd almost equate it to, maybe it's a bad comparison, but eminent domain, you have a use that is more necessary than the, the value of the historic nature, and that's been determined by council through that process. So if you say we needed it to build a certain facility or something like that, and it was protected, but it would need to go away because of that, that's probably the best example.
And, and again, if there was a, if there was an issue where it was, you know, structurally unsafe, that's at, under the purview of the building official, so it wouldn't have to come back to you if it needed to come down right away if it was a, you know, a matter of public safety.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just, if you...
And if I could just, if you'd indulged me for a few minutes about history. Fantastic presentation and the research you did is just phenomenal, just to learn about it. I'm hoping that we can get a copy for the Historical Society. If you go back to the history of Santa Paula, there's a portion of our town back in the early teens and probably early twenties where it used to be called Mexico Town. In fact, in the Sanborn maps of that area, it's also listed, a block of houses called Mexican shanties, listed in the Sanborn maps. So it was definite segregation in the city of Mexicans, one part. So it's, it's a welcome, welcome sight to see that they built a theater for the Mexican people. And it's obviously, they gravitated to it. As far as segregation in this theater, I don't think so. Because obviously, it's, most of its life was for Mexican movies. In fact, I went to Mexican movies there as a kid and just before it closed in the 72. And the former chief of police, interim chief Ish Cordero, used to run the projectors. So there's a little bit of history that goes on there. The other two theaters that were in town were the Glen City Theater in the 800 block of East Main, and that burnt just after wartime. That one may have had some segregation. And then the Fox Theater where Bank America sits now, I don't, I don't think it was. But I've spoken to enough Hispanic men and women, someone who passed away, that told me that there was actual designated right and left side for Hispanic people. And if you sat on the wrong side, you risked getting escorted out or beat up. So we should, just as a matter of history, get those statements from those folks. So it becomes part of our history, good or bad. And that way, hopefully, we'll never revert to that again. But again, thank you very much for this presentation. I look forward to this being designated as a historical landmark because it's a very unique building. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Just also, just from a personal perspective, having seen the building for more than 40 years, maybe not as long as others in the city, and always wishing that something could be done about restoring because it's so clear that it is so important or was so important and so historic. So it, and now knowing more of the story of it, to preserve the history of the theater as well as the architecture is really, really exciting to me. And what we hear in my business, this is going on more like 35 years ago. People would come and tell me about how Santa Paula was a place to come because it was a very exciting place to come for huge Mexican dances. The theater, the Glen Tavern was where the movie, people from Los Angeles would come and stay, Charlie Chaplin, and there's a whole list of those who would. So this was really a cultural center for movies. So clearly, that's why, you know, the movie theaters as well. And also, that wonderful combination of the mix of cultures that we have as a history of our city. And so I find this project really exciting, and I look forward to seeing it move forward if possible.
I have, I have just to, I'd like to ask a little bit about the vision of restoration. But beyond that, what is your, what do you plan to do with the use of the facility? And what that, what that timeline looks like for you? I think our town is, our community is eager for these special places to be available and open.
David is, David's right there, he's being a little shy today. So I will, I will try to, basically, David, you may need to come up here at some point, but I'll try to speak for you in the beginning. So he just restored the Ojai Playhouse. And that was quite an ambitious project. What I understand is he wants to do that same level of energy here. It would be movies, it would be music. And once we found out, I did not know, in the beginning, I just thought I was landmarking a cute theater. I did not know about any of this history. And, and by the way, there's a gentleman at Cal State Channel Islands named Dr. Jose Alamillo, who's writing a whole history of Mexican cinema in Southern California. And he was very helpful with this. I think that part of the plan is definitely to show some, some Spanish-language cinema here and to cater to the Spanish-language community of Santa Paula, along with, you know, just along, along with anything else, like reg, you know, whatever that cinema is. Come here, come here. I can't, I can't make this up much longer. So I'm the historian, this is your owner, this is David Berger. And go ahead, just tell, tell me your vision.
How's it going? Um, yeah, I'm so like photophobic, camera shy, not a public speaker, like to hide in the back, just try to create things from my computer and talking to people and ideas creativity. Um, yeah, I mean, I mean, the goal is to bring people together through the cinema experience and to present all kinds of movies, definitely Spanish-speaking films and nostalgia and classics and new stuff that would inspire younger generations, not just Hollywood stuff. I did restore the Ojai Playhouse. That cinema opened as the ISIS Theater in 1914. It was silent movies until '26, just like the Tower. Mission, the Electra, the Columbia. These are early Nickelodeon storefront cinemas. They, they're a gem. I had some success in my life just working day job into finding opportunities, really working, and had some success in my life. And I took all that money and I had the opportunity to buy the Playhouse. And I put everything into the Playhouse. Because of that experience, I met the former owner of the Tower, who really believed in me and said, "You should really own this place and make it a cinema." And so we did that. We did that exchange. And yeah, my goal is to restore it and bring it back to community and revitalize and recharge people's spirits and create a place for connection and empathy. And, and I think it'll be fun to connect the theaters in a way between Ojai and Santa Paula and make each a destination in their way and in their own style and their own flavor. You know, these places are going away. These cinemas don't, they're just, every day you apply Google movie theater news and you read about how these cinemas just, you know, they don't make a lot of money. You know, if it's about the money, it's really, it's not attractive. I'm learning that through the Playhouse, just the expenses and you make maybe some percentage in the ticket sales. The rest is concession. It's a great job. It's an old-fashioned job. The currency isn't the, the money. The currency is really in the empathy and the connection of people. You see it in Ojai, which is very much different from Santa Paula, where Ojai is very multi-layered, very different types of folks. Special, beautiful place like Santa Paula. More city in a way of like industry and competition, like maybe there's just on the street, people like who's the coolest? Like everyone wants to know who the coolest landscape designer, who's the coolest architect? Who makes the best pastry? I mean, it's silly. And it's frustrating in Ojai. But what you find when people come to the movies together, when they're, because it's a single screen. When you have one screen, you're, it's not like we're all different and where you're going to see a Western, you're going to see a comedy, you're going to see a, you know, horror. We're all going different places. We're all going to one focused presentation. And what I'm seeing, and which is pretty amazing, is just people just really, once they're in, they're all melting on each other. It's in the dark. People are just melting, want the connection, all emotional, very kind and friendly to each other. There's no, it's like there isn't an outside. It's all about the moment, it's about what's happening in the magic of the cinema. And so, you know, for me, one life to live, I want to do something big with my life that will affect people and affect the future. And, you know, I want to save this beautiful movie theater. And it is my goal to landmark it, protect it for forever, restore it back into a community cinema. So I mean, I could talk about it. And once I get talking, I'll talk to you about it forever. I mean, you know, it's a deep, deep, it's a little, it's multi-layered. Sure. But I don't know, I just think for Santa Paula, I mean, it's been sitting there. I know Ira really tried to really make the dream happen, would be purchased from the city. And he's a great, great person and incredibly supportive. He had that vision, it's an easy vision to have, it's like, let's make a movie theater. Quite simple, like it should be a movie theater. It is a movie theater. I don't know, just to protect it and preserve it and restore it and revitalize, I think it would really be like, wow, like so much light and positivity for people. And also, it's just so beautiful because no one is making these cinemas. I hope they do in the future times. That we get away from our streaming world and going to a place where we can all come together like we used to. More so. I mean, again, the beauty of these independent cinemas too is they are independent. And they're not... Corporateed cinemas. You know, it's, and it's sad because mostly the corporate cinemas can afford to keep these multi-classes. Although that industry's really been hurt too. So it's almost like, it's kind of old-fashioned to like have a single-screen cinema. I mean, it's kind of crazy. But it is so much part of who we are. You know, what we all grew up with. And it's sad to let it go. And it's very tragic to let it go. But muchas gracias. Muchas gracias por escucharnos a nosotros. Y muchas gracias por compartir tu vida. Amazing historical architect who's landmarked so many important, unique places. Y este edificio histórico que también es muy único. I couldn't do it without him, but we did find a lot of beauty in the history. And a lot of it very much so connected to the history of Santa Paula and the real people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. You know, I noticed in the letter of recommendation that you have from Professor Alamillo. You know, Professor Alamillo's endorsement is a big deal, especially because of his understanding of history. He was a vital player in bringing the Bracero traveling exhibit Smithsonian to Cal State Channel Islands. And so his impact in this community, and when we see that, when I see that name, I know others feel the same way, is just a testament that the right people are connecting with each other to bring back a space that really honors tradition and our history. So thank you for sharing that. Thank you. Last comment?
Yeah, just one final comment. You know, when you were talking about the connection between Ojai and Santa Paula with the theaters, it reminded me of when we hosted the closing concert for the Ojai Music Festival, right? And how it was the director of that year's show, it was the one and only time it happened, but he had come through town and just thought this would be the perfect place. And the energy that was created is, there were, there were two stages set up and these people went, moved back and forth. And every time you moved back and forth, you ended up talking to different people. Because you had, you know, usually you go and you sit down somewhere and you're in one place. But as you turn and you walk back, you know, it got to the point by like the third or fourth time, whoever you were walking next to, whether you knew them or not, you were talking. And so as you were talking, it reminded me of that. And it would be my hope for this space, that some of that energy and connection would also happen in that space. I'm excited about this. It's been a really long time since we got to designate a building as historic. And so I'm, I'm very excited to be a part of this process.
Councilmember, yes. And also, as an aside, if you Google different things that happened in Santa Paula, in the early part of their career for a very short period of time, Georgia and Gasson Millier, they had a film studio here in town before they went to L.A. and Europe.
I'm still doing a lot of research on that, but I mean, it's true. I mean, Gasper came to Santa Paula in 1910, 1910. And he supposedly produced forty short westerns. Might have been more, it might have been more, it could have been sixty, but a long list. And he was here for a couple of years only. Their main studio was the... Right, exactly. So, I mean, we couldn't find anything about them actually showing those films at the Electra. You know, maybe we can try to find that. I mean, that's really, it would be amazing. I mean, I would imagine they had the theater three blocks up, you know, two blocks ahead of blocks up. It's a production facility. So yeah, it would have been just great if they showed those films there. But what an early pioneer, from the principes of the pod and the cali, of the, of the películas in California, that this was here. Those posters, they're still here in the camino. And I was looking for information about that, that's outside, but it's, it's, it's very impactful. When you're looking at the town theater, that was 1916. So you have Electra, 1911, you have ISIS, which is the Ojai Playhouse. 1914, you have the Town in 1916. So in those three years, you have this cluster of storefront late teen Nickelodeon movie theaters, California movie theaters. I mean, there's no other real place in California that has like that trifecta, like that grouping. So, you know, maybe it was coming west and coming down, or big down L.A. or, I don't know. Very interesting. And then, yes, I agree about the destination. Not so destination, because I don't like, it's not about tourism, but more about, like, I'm in Ojai and there's a cool movie theater. And we're going to go to Santa Paula and we're going to go to me. And we're going to walk the shops and we're going to... Yeah, and it works both, both ways. You know, we bring both cities closer to each other through the experience of going to the movies and what surrounds that or what other things accompany, you know, accompany that. Anyways, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comments? No public comments? I'd like to close a public hearing, discussion and action. Councilmember?
Well, I don't know if there's discussion, but I would be willing to do the action. So I think we kind of blended discussion with presentation. We were so interested. So if you're ready for a motion, I'll take this on. I would move that we waive the first reading, read by title only and introduce ordinance number 1341, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Paula, identifying the Tower Theater at 982 East Main Street as a historic landmark pursuant to the SPMC, Chapter 16.33, and in accordance with City Council Ordinance Number 816, and finding the action to be categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Title 14 of the California Code of Regulation Sections 15308 Class 8 and 15331 Class 31.
Great, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I would second that, Mayor.
There's a second by the vice mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Congratulations. All right, so we're moving on to item number 11, action items. We don't have any. Items 12, items for future agenda items, 12A, future agenda items. Mr. Mason?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right. With that said, let's have a good night, and I adjourn this meeting at 8:37. Thank you so much for watching.